Is our motion?
Twenty twenty-three.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, Mr. Allison. Mrs. Turner, aye. Okay, Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Also, that will also stand as our roll call. We're all here. And reminder to folks, this is being recorded and broadcast on Sterling Lancaster Television. So I apologize, apologies for not announcing that sooner. We do not have scheduled appearances or board committee department reports, so we are going directly to public comment. As a reminder, we will take public comment in the room first and then online. If you want to speak in your online, please put your virtual hand up and we'll call you in the order that you come up. Reminder, the Supreme Judicial Court says, I can't tell you how nice to be or not nice to be, but it does say that we can decide whether there is public comment or how long it will be. So we're allowing two minutes, as is per custom. For folks, I will raise my hand like this when you have about one minute to go and then cut you off at the two-minute mark. Please, of course, public comment is for Lancaster residents. Please, either when you take the podium or take public comment here, please begin by stating your name and address. So first, I will go, and when we have someone in the room, I will turn my computer around to them. Long line of people slash nobody at the podium. So we will go to online for any public comment. Almost as equally along the line. Okay, Ann Ogilvy. Did Ann, by the way, did you get my email response? I sent you a response before the meeting started.
I have not seen it, Steve, but I'll check. Thank you, I appreciate that you responded.
In case this is related, just, we are not gonna... My hope is, and it's obviously up to my colleagues, but my intention would not be to vote any amendments to the MOA today. I mean, to discuss it, get some questions, and then be able to have a collective collection of questions answered prior to and perhaps during our December 4th meeting. So that was the substance of my response to you.
Well, that's great, and I really appreciate it. So thanks for the update and thanks for that progress note. I think that's a great, it's great news. So thanks a lot.
Not a problem.
I do have a comment related to that.
Name and address.
Ann Ogilvy, Ford Turner Lane.
Thank you.
And I guess what I'm hoping that the board will consider as you consider this proposed amendment to the memorandum of agreement from the seven oh-two LLC developers. This amendment will be the third time around with this particular group, right? We had an agreement for them to give us land when we dropped a court case about mining that was being done illegally on town property. And we dropped that case in exchange for the land that they were gonna give us years ago. And they didn't give us the land. And then we made this MOA as part of this re-owning agreement that happened this year after failing last year at this time. And the idea was, now they're gonna do a great project for us and they're gonna give us our land and we're gonna agree on land, build out in massive houses that could be really detrimental to town. I think that the economic benefits, at least for some, outweigh the environmental and quality of life impacts. So this MOA is now the third round here with the same developers. And so I just wanna point that out. And I guess the other thing I wanna point out is as you consider the agreement, I'd like you to also consider what's been done to the land off of McGovern Boulevard. There was a permit, New England Specialty Soils, which is a company owned by Steve Boucher, has been mining that property, but their permit expired in 2020. The town has done nothing to investigate this permit. I would really love it if the town would pick this up, investigate what the other seven oh-two LLC member alleges is illegal mining happening on that property outside of the permit.
Time, sorry.
So if the town could pick up on that, investigate what has been mined on that land since the 2020 permit expired.
Sorry, time, 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 aye, sorry.
Okay, I'll get back in line. I just wanna finish this one thought, but thank you.
If you need like an extra 20 seconds, I'm glad to give it to you.
I might need 30, Steve, so I'll try.
Take it right now.
But my point is, you know, Steve Boucher, who is New England Specialty Soils owner, is also a signatory on this proposed amendment to the MOA. And so I understand that, you know, or at least I'm asking the board to consider looking at what has been done to this property, what has been mined since 2020, and what the plan for restoration of this property is so that the select board can appropriately steward our resources, take responsibility for making sure that what's done under our bylaws in terms of earth products removal has done well. So thank you, and I hope you'll take that into consideration.
Yes. Nobody else online, nobody in the room. That becomes our second shortest public comment period in my time as chair. So, public comment is closed. Now we will move on to next agenda item, Town Administrator Report, the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, D.C. next steps.
Yeah, so...
Hi there. So I am just looking for some guidance after we discussed having a public portion of this progress. I was gonna come back with some ideas. So the first would be sort of the obvious and most low-hanging fruit, which would be to visit all of the boards and committees that either wish to be visited or have standing in whatever happens there and go through a smaller version of what you all saw here from Mass Development and getting their insight and perspectives. I also am working on finishing out our agreement with Mass Development, which is at the end of the calendar year. And from that, I'm looking to do some type of financial benefit analysis. So the idea of if we were to be at full buildout, as you saw with the 192 to 194 units, what that would mean economically, what would it mean for the number of students economically? So would there be a benefit? Would there be a cost to the town? Would there be no change, neutral? I think that kind of conversation will help drive and further refine if we end up going through the regulatory boards and the community and it seems like the density is too great and we wanna lower it down. That would be really helpful to know sooner than later before we start putting out any type of notion of what we want. So the thought would be to do two tracks. One is the first, that I can go and visit the other boards, either virtually or in person, depending on how they meet, have those conversations, get that feedback. And the other thought was that the board might contemplate having some type of public forums, maybe at different times during the day, whether one be during the day during the morning, at the senior center, another one perhaps at the library. So we can try to get all different types of persons involved from all different times of the day. That way, if people work at night, they can participate, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I'm looking for some idea of whether, A, that's a good way to approach it, and B, when you think would be a time that you would wanna entertain having those types of meetings and where you would want them and the kind of, I don't know, program for those so that I can go and, if they're not in our building and they're not in the old town hall, I can go talk to those groups and try to get you all on the schedule.
Sure.
That's where I'm at.
I have some thoughts, but I'll yield to my colleagues. Stand by. Hold on.
Thank you for being proactive and getting, keeping this right on track and taking that. The public, we heard loud and clear that people wanted more, a chance for some more substantive input. And I think going to different boards and commissions is critical. I think for both your time and our time and a helpful exchange, maybe we want to follow the older version of what used to be what's called the tech team, where they got boards and commissions together. You could do all boards and commissions and just some sort of a working group so you could hear, because of, you know, that was the whole concept behind community planning is you get the related building departments together, Board of Health, you know, Planning, ZBA, and so on. But also to extend that and include Public Safety Sewer Commission. And, you know, you could go on with all, with all the boards, including things like historical, you know, there's a historical element on the grounds and conservation. So I think that might be a better use of your time or our time and have it more for staffs and boards. Following that, I think your idea of having larger public forums with the rest of the board would be ideal so once people were informed and had a more gallant, you know, a better informed discussion with the public. I think it's important that we don't marry ourselves to any idea until we get that input so we can be flexible enough to move with that. But doing this as quickly as possible would be good. I don't really care about where it's held as long as there's good acoustics, it's warm enough. So I would say maybe the school auditorium, just a guess, but I would go with, or cafeteria if it was, you know, more of a, the last master plan we did at the school and the round tables and working wave. We did breakout groups, that worked really well. But that would be up to those organizing.
All right. All right.
I'm done.
So Kate, I'm in the camp of liking your proposal. I think everything you've done so far has been spot on and Lancaster's been rewarded with that approach. So I like what you did previously with the North Lancaster, which is maybe two rounds of forums. First is, no one will attend. And then the second one, everyone will feel a sense of urgency. I'm opposed to large working groups. I find that they move a little slower and they can kinda get held up by schedules. So, you know, any forum can allow the participation of any individual. So you don't have to have working groups. You kind of invite people to forums and they can speak in any capacity they want. So, you know, I'd be for that, I'd be for starting it sooner. But one thing I think you've done so far that's been fantastic is not like, hey, what do you want? Like, there's proposals. There's, hey, these are the things we're thinking about and let's talk about those types of approaches. You really need to kind of put some ideas out there and not just leave the slate blank and, you know, let's imagine something up. So that's where I'd be on that.
All right. So my question, I just have a couple of questions. First, I miss, well, maybe it's not a question, it's assumption, and then you'll tell me what I'm right around. That the presentation to the different boards and commissions is similar to what we've seen, right? So it's, which I think is fantastic. I don't think it's a, sorry, sorry. I totally think that's a great move, go to their particular meetings, carve out time in their agendas and get that done. I do think also marrying the two proposals and throwing in a general board commission member presentation meeting where anybody who couldn't make those or something can then come and hear the presentation. Rather than a working group, it's just more to give people that final opportunity. And then relative to the sort of charrettes or the public participation piece, I'm all for it. I think having two or three at different times of day and days of the week, I think makes total sense. You know, this is what you do for a living, so you know this stuff. My only thing I would love to, and I don't know this, I've done enough meeting planning in my life to know what I'm good at and what I'm not. I don't know best practices relative to engaging public in conversation at those types of things. Is it things where you put stickers on them? Like, I don't know that. Perhaps you do. Perhaps Mass Development has best practices or they have a company that does those types of things or a module that they hand over for... So the concept, 100% with it. If it's helpful to help think through those things, fine. But I, again, I know what I don't know and those are the things that I really wanna be good at, but I'm just not. So I'm just gonna say that.
Is the board interested in...
I'm the owl, I'm just gonna keep scuttling.
I'm trying to figure out, is the, do you want to have some type of more formal, detailed proposal of how I would run one of those meetings? Because I have, obviously, I did capital planning in another community.
I'd love to see it.
I can do that.
Yeah, I'd just love to see it, 'cause honest, more from a curiosity perspective. Also, we may have a sense of like what our neighbors and fellow residents might react to differently from a process piece, but you know, what works doesn't work. And then, obviously, I'd love to attend, I'd be there, which I would so be. You'll be welcome, but...
Technically, it's your...
Our meeting. But I don't think you should, I think you have the material and the information to move forward with other boards and commissions and departments too, which I think one of you mentioned, town staff or public sector. Ah, you may.
Like you said, Brian, our planning director, has been scheduled with tech team meetings. So I'm sure...
If you reach out to him, he'd schedule one. And he does include like all the department heads and everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, my goal, it would be to purposefully have the internal staff team, not that everybody isn't welcome, but to have that be separate from the boards and committees because they're two separate disciplines. And I don't want town staff to feel like they can't speak up. And I know that sometimes that happens when you're at a meeting that isn't your meeting, right? So I think maybe for next steps, I can bring, I will take it from here and go to the boards and committees. I will see who has an appetite to have a small thing on the agenda. Then I will poll them to see who would like to have a, bring one, bring several, bring everybody, and what day that might work. Also inviting town staff to any and all of those. And then a more detailed, this is how a, we call it like a town hall meeting. That would be how it would run. And then you all can discuss, you know, who wants to moderate that, who wants to, you know, et cetera. 'Cause there's two different ways to do it. One is, you know, I don't wanna say lame, but it's rather static. And then the other is, is as Alex described, where you have people that are interested in certain aspects sort of go on, go out on their separate tiers.
If you can put those materials together, I mean, I don't wanna stop you in your meeting with your, particularly internal people. Put that stuff together, put the exhaustive list of boards and commissions and whatnot together that you'll approach, just 'cause, and throw them in our packet along with the packet for the next meeting in case we think, hey, what about this group? And, you know, we all missed something. Fantastic. Any other questions, comments for Ms. Hodges?
Just a question for me, sorry. Is the board's appetite to, given that we need to make a decision by what will be a year from now, pretty much, is the appetite to perhaps meet end of January, beginning of February? Because if in fact the town is interested in taking it over, we need to budget at six, we need to budget a half of a year for holding costs. And so we need to know whether there's an appetite to do that or not. So is end of January, beginning of February...
Yeah, I mean, I think with it, I, George, having sort of a sense by the end of Q1 so that we can budget appropriately.
Understood.
Okay, any other questions for the board? Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Oh, check and just look down at the piece of paper. Budget review, FY25 financial outlook, capital budget. Let me say, we sat in this very room for, I don't know how many hours, five hours? Saturday. It was really bravado to you and the staff, Cheryl and everybody, on behalf of this board and the Finance Committee for the work you did to put together the first draft of the budget in such fantastically good shape. And we look forward to what's next, but I know you wanted to give us a update, I suppose.
Yep, so when we were beginning the budget that day, we had run through the numbers and we were, for general fund expenses, so this is not school, we were somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,200 under last year.
Two thousand two hundred and twenty-one.
Two thousand two hundred and twenty-one. And we're actually closer to 55,000 now and...
Today, 1,000, not 5,500.
55,000, yes.
It's five-five.
And then zeros, zeros.
And so what we'll be looking for in terms of next steps internally is to finalize the numbers, check all of the different columns, make sure we have them all correctly filled out with differentials, et cetera, make some of the things that we talked about as priorities and goals and some of the things that we talked about perhaps not needing on Saturday, provide that as another draft, but in a more holistic manner so you have all of the goals and objectives from the division managers and department heads. And I know I've told you in the past, but this year we did a full goal-setting session. It was three sessions long. So this year's budget book has all of the goals and objectives aligned to appropriation requests because what we did was zero-based budgeting. So we took the budget and we basically started at zero and then built it from the ground up rather than in years past, what was done was looked at prior year spending and then either consider rates of inflation or up and down. This is sort of like starting as if Lancaster was just founded yesterday, which it was not, but it's a helpful exercise to do. It's a helpful exercise to do for staff. It's a helpful exercise to do for myself as town administrator, given that we're past the harmlessness of needing the override and getting into, you know, trying to understand what is living within our means. We can't do that if we don't know what the means are. So my desire, and I, at first was a desire, then it was a goal, and now I believe that goal is gonna come to fruition, is that the only increase, if any, to the budget for this year will be in education. And even that, I think we will not see the full weight of that because there's cost savings that have been realized on the municipal end. So I hope that that, although not an underwrite, provides people with some level of relief.
Sounds good. Any questions for Kate on the budget review?
No, thank you for the...
Is the capital budget part of that or is that separate?
I didn't have much more than what we said on Saturday only 'cause it's been a day.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And all of you watching online, I feel like you must be getting dizzy 'cause I keep spinning this laptop around. But I'm reminded, since we're past public comment, you can watch it on Sterling Lancaster Telecommunity Television. So if you get a little dizzy, you can always tune in on television and you're just staring right at us in a static manner. Next item is the MOU amendment update. Do you wanna take us through what we're looking at and then we can have discussion?
Yes. So this came about in the midst of the Capital Group's MIPA review where according to their leasing agent and the partners, they would be amenable to giving the entirety of the parcels that were owed to the property, not in a staggered manner with the ability to be able to use the property. They have said, and I realize there's conflicting rules out there, that there isn't mining or removal going on, that it's moving around the existing parcel. To the comment earlier and any other comments that the town isn't aware of what's going on, there are certain things that are contractual that have to be litigated. And so my office has been dealing with that long before I even took office. And so there's quite a large paper trail of what's going, what's going on right now. The latest is that the persons who were there before that operation has gone out of business. Now whether or not that's true in form or whether the people have changed remains to be seen, but I think it's being looked at. So I really don't want the takeaway to be that the town, at least in there, hasn't done it because there's all types of files dating all the way back to the end of 2000 and 2021. So, and those obviously predate me, so I can't speak to them, but I have seen them. And over the summer, we had written, or legal has written several other things to try to get a handle on that. So what the proposal is here, my understanding is you're gonna generate questions. I can write down the questions you have here. I have questions from the community. You can send them to me and I can get them answered. And if you don't receive the answers that you want or you don't receive an answer, then you can make your determination based on that.
Sounds good. Yeah, my understanding about the, and that's why I'm glad we're getting questions answered and writing from them. But my understanding was the, the, I didn't know the name of it, but now I do what the NEST permit name is, that there were previously excavated materials there and that the process that's going on there is that they're being mixed to make different types of gravel, but they're not being excavated currently and haven't been for quite some time. I don't know that, I'm not an expert. That's why we have a process to get your answers to your questions. So perhaps, and I've sent questions to Kate, I hope most of them I've received answers to. So how do you guys wanna handle processing questions?
So I have a lot of questions. This has been, this has been concerning to me. So I wanna start off by saying that I know Jason worked long and hard as Chair of the MOU Committee to get in, to protect the town and to get a satisfactory memorandum of understanding that would help alleviate people's fears in passing the new zoning. And then at that point, it was turned over to you, Steve, and Kate, and we came up with the existing memorandum of understanding, which is being asked to be amended now. I will say that I think that as the zoning has passed, both the 40R zoning and the expansion of the EZ zoning, nothing stands in the way of progressing with permitting to, should people... 'Cause people I know have looked at this parcel. I think the biggest primary, the primary motivator for many people's voting was, let's face it, tax relief. And that door is wide open now. So if people want to, the parties that own it and manage it wanna pursue anything that is beneficial to the town, I think we're, I think something we could probably all agree on is that would be great, tax relief would be, would be welcome. That said, in the existing memorandum of understanding, I had asked for and received a memorandum of understanding update. And the reason I had asked for it is after the zoning was approved by the Attorney General, that triggered something that was supposed to be done. And I don't know if we're gonna have the answers tonight. I'm not, you know, expecting that.
Yeah, I would caution you not to expect the answers tonight.
Right, 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 I understand that. But the things that I was looking forward to, that things that I was actually happy that was in the memorandum of understanding, that I understood that the 40B that Capital Group applied for was going to be withdrawn from the state. I don't know if that has actually happened. And one of the biggest sticking points of why there was an MOA was because of what they call the settlement agreement, which was land was due to the town, 86 acres. I didn't like the settlement agreement at the time because I thought the town gave up millions of dollars of sand rights. And that was before Kate and before Steve.
Right.
And before Jason, I think, was even on the board. But the, so the point is...
MOU questions, so we gotta make sure...
Yeah, no, they are, they are, they are related to the MOU. So it was a driving force, I think the return of the land was the driving force behind the MOU in order to get those votes, or one of them, because literally the town sacrificed a lot of minerals in order to get past taxes paid. The, I know we're getting, if the amendment is approved, then we would get the immediate transfer of 72 acres. When was that, so my question would be, when was that 72 acres due? And the settlement agreement is two parcels. One of them is also, so it would be a total of 86 acres.
Yes.
Is that, did I hear you right? Is that already underway? Do we already...
That was at the passage of...
Yeah, the 14th.
The 40R. So at the acceptance of that, that's in the process right now. The others, what their plan was, was to take all of the, I guess, the divided parcels. And you asked how it was supposed to be dependent on square footage that was developed. That's how it was originally. They're saying now they would aggregate that all together as one parcel, submit a new A and R as one parcel, and then deed that to the town. So that would be the entirety.
Okay.
Yeah, it was something like for every...
It used to be like every 200,000 square feet or something. It was something... It was some formula out of...
Okay. So one of the things that confused me as I read over this and marked it all up was there was discussion of there wasn't going to be an A and R or there was. So if we could just ask for some clarification on that. It's section six, section B.
Section six B?
Six B, yep, six, six B, yep. And it sounds like, and it's, to transfer to the town, a single deed is a parcel without reference to the A and R plan specified in the original agreement.
Right, because they're going to avoid it.
Avoid the original.
They're going to avoid it.
And do a no.
Yeah, but the way I read that, that it was, there was no A and R going to be done. And if we took it, I don't care really the form, as long as we have clear title to these things.
We would have to have clear title, but that would be as if the A and R didn't happen.
Okay. The other big thing that I have, or there's plenty of them, but this document requires what they call a letter of zoning, I believe. Is that what the term is? And it asks, excuse me, asks the building inspector to do, to provide a letter. The way I read it is allowing outdoor storage.
Correct. Because right now, the information from Ty and Bond, who are the ones that were working on their monetary enclosure plan, were that the only things, they're not excavating anymore, that the only things that they're doing is hauling or mixing existing stockpiled materials. So they are hauling additional stockpiled materials out, but they're not doing any other additional removals. And then they're mixing to make aggregate. So I think Chief Moody can likely speak to the fact that we've used that area in question to park folks for the Bolton.
Yeah, I know they're doing it, and it's not a, I don't think it's a secret to anybody. I don't...
Well, no, but what I was trying to say is what people seem to think is that they're mining or they're excavating, and they're not doing that.
Well, see, that's, so well, the first step is we do have a provision for outdoor storage in our zoning to allow it. All they have to do is go through the process with the planning board. But I don't think we can legally require the building inspector to attest to something without having them go through. We undermine our own bylaws. Just, and there's a clause in here about not, about being in conformance with Massachusetts laws. I don't think we're in conformance with our own laws on that and on the signage. Because the signage, I don't even know what the signage is. It talks about an attached form, so it doesn't matter what it is. Those are, that's up to the ZBA.
So, okay, I think you'll probably need to articulate those questions in an email, so I can just send them right off, so you make sure that, I don't want to interpret it wrongly. But the zoning determination draft was something that Mike Silver was working on with council as late as even last week. And he was fairly comfortable that what was being done there is within their rights. So if you feel differently than that, you'll just need to provide me with something that I can then make sure that I'm relaying properly.
Okay, yeah, I was just going from our used shirts and zoning and what we've done in the past, because...
Let's see, you'll get the question.
Yeah, so I'll write those questions down for you and get them over.
What's the timeframe under which you would like the question, so we can get the answers?
I guess it's the timeframe that you all want to discuss this again. Are you planning on at the December 4th meeting or?
I would like to, yeah.
Okay, so...
But it's up to my colleagues, but...
I mean, I would need probably at least three or four days for, particularly if they're complicated and council-driven, to send those. Just so that you have a...
So if they're going to close a business next Monday, then you would have, you know...
A week.
A week or so.
Yeah, I mean, the alternative is, you could...
Come by your house on Thursday, review the questions.
You could, but I'll be at the football game.
Well, we can come there.
No, that's, does that give you enough time?
It wouldn't be my answer, so it's certainly, I can forward anything any day.
And honestly, if it's not ready by the 4th, it's more important that we get the answers, then we push a...
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is I can request that folks are either on Zoom or available to answer your questions live, if that's what you want. That I can't guarantee, but I'm sure it's a large enough firm that somebody could do that.
Well, it'd be nice, I think, if we have questions. You're probably going to get some from the public too, right?
Sure, yeah.
That you get as many questions as possible, but it might be nice if we wanted to have that option as well.
But I would, I want, I think those questions, I would just encourage folks that if we have council on Zoom at whatever meeting we consider this, they should be questions that come from the conversation we are engaging in then, that we get as many questions in advance and then we don't let it become a free-for-all with everyone just throwing questions at council from the public and everyone else.
Well, likely too, if they're complex, they would say, well, I'm going to need to look into etcetera.
So we should get as, we should think as exhaustively as possible, both us and the public, and submit questions as early as possible to get as well-thought-out.
I would say if possible, by the end of next Tuesday would probably, not, I don't want to speak for them, but I think that's more than enough time for them to be able to get you a response that you can absorb over the weekend before Monday, the 4th meeting.
Great.
Okay. Something that was in the first, is in the first, because this is just an amendment. So the existing stays, except we're stricken here, is that we gave up our right to litigate in favor of arbitration.
Yeah.
I would, I don't like that, but I don't know if they'd be willing, since we're opening this up at their request, if we could regain our right to litigate. Because we've had a hard time, as you've seen, those files and files of paper trails there, unsuccessfully working here. I think it's good for everybody if we...
I would just, I think, I think we should, to the best of our ability, we can keep our questions to the substance and not the process.
No, no, that's part of the MOU amendment. I want that in as an amendment.
No, no, I understand, but that's not the substance of the land and transfers and things that happen on land. It's the process of how we can enforce the MOU.
So what would you like me to say? I just...
You can ask the question.
That I would like to insert, that I would like to strike the, that we are limited to arbitration and put back in that the town could defend ourselves in court?
So that wouldn't be a council question. That's a policy question.
That's the three of us.
Yeah, you guys, I mean, you would ask that to the other parties. But once they do that, I think the whole...
Yeah, the whole... So I would say that that is, and it becomes difficult to then, as we move forward on other development deals, it just suggests that on any moment, we can then change our policy and ask to get rid of that shift. That's why I'm saying the substance, meaning the property itself, land transfers, all those kinds of things, all the other questions you've asked, but the enforcement provisions, other things like that, I think we reopen that and I think it'll be hard to get anybody to sign a deal with us in the future.
What is your specific concern with binding arbitration versus litigation? Have you been, I mean, I'm assuming you've been involved in both. Did one actively not work out for you and why?
It's not me personally, it's the town. It tends to be there is more avenues and more recourse. Arbitration, it can be, it can work wonderfully, but it is...
So most of our contracts have that first because it's less expensive. So almost all of them, that's why I'm asking, because this would be a change of...
So, yeah, so I would just say, I would not have an appetite for reopening that piece of it from a policy perspective, but you can certainly put down list of questions.
Okay, and we can discuss that.
We can, I just, I don't know that I would have an appetite.
The other thing that's important, I noticed that there's two signatories to this, 702 and North Lancaster LLC. I would suggest that, given the fact that they're both suing each other in court...
We can't, we can't, no, but like, we can't talk...
Well, no, but it's just the ownership is in question. They signed first.
Right now, we have to deal with the owners that we signed the deal with. We can't get involved in any of the litigation.
We signed with both, we signed with both parties, right?
We have to keep going with, and they're still operating as the corporation that we signed with. So that's there on them to say their corporate structure has changed. We don't have...
And they have said that, and that's David's word.
But not to us. It's a very, very difficult legal situation if we wade into their, it is not, it's an, it would be terribly inappropriate for us to do.
I know, so when aware, this is our opportunity to speak, and I don't want to cross over lines.
I'm just saying, it's, that's not sort of...
Well, for example...
Nothing has, we have to look at it, we're not a party to their legal disputes. We have to look at it as if we know nothing about that and there's a wall there and the people we signed with are the people we're dealing with. We, just because we've, some, I haven't looked at any of them on purpose, just because folks in town have seen court documents and whatnot, we, that, our obligation is with the...
Isn't that irresponsible though?
No, it's, no, it's quite, no. I mean...
So Mr. Petrie swore upon, penalty is a perjury, that the MOU...
That is Mr. Petrie's issue, not ours.
Well, then he swore to us.
That's not, that is not, I'm just saying, I would really, back away, I would just back away from that. It's not something that this board is supposed to be considering.
Yeah, put it, I'm not sure why we're talking about corporate scene when the conversation is a memorandum.
Right, that's my point, is that's not relevant, it's not, it's not within the purview of this board.
So not talk about these people, let's just make up, Joe Smith comes to us for something and may or may not own or have control or have the ability to ask for something, but they do anyway.
At the time they sign those documents, they signed, according to you, that they have the control of that land. That is the operating principle we operate on until a court or somebody else tells us different. We cannot weigh in, have any, I would suggest that any public official not make comments one way or the other that could be read into any sort of court proceeding because it would, I just, I would caution you to move on to your next question and steer away from that.
All right.
That would be my advice.
There's been enough question about the site, integrity of the site. Nobody, nobody, I don't think, knows what's going to happen to the site a year, two, four from now. And this question about whether their materials, whoever may own it, is being processed or not. I think it would be a good time, we had two letters from Ty and Bond this year and other letters, and this permit has expired. The most recent permit, which Kate sent me, which I really appreciate, thank you, from a company that is supposedly out of business, that expired in 2020. So given that, I think the owner is responsible for the land. I think it would be valuable for this board to talk, to get CEI or Ty and Bond or a combination of people to look at a site, look at the site. They're doing that. Get it restored, get it restored, because...
Yeah.
And...
Those are two separate, but...
Those are two separate things.
Well, at least offer us, yes, offer us a restoration plan.
So we have, your questions on, which is unrelated to the MOU, on the NEST thing are valid questions, and I know Kate, we have some digging and we're... I'm not intended. But I want to see if you have any final MOU-related questions. You obviously can submit more and essentially submit all that, right?
Yeah, I have, I have a ton of MOU questions, but I'm trying to keep them...
But let's say on the MOU first and then anything that's not MOU-related.
Those, most of them, I don't want to tread where I'm not supposed to tread, so I'm a little more uncomfortable with some of them.
Tread not there, then.
Yeah, so I will send them to Kate and she can tell me if I'm treading incorrectly.
Sounds good. Any other non-trial questions? I will spin. Strahlessen?
Yeah, so just to the Lancaster residents. Lancaster is the fiscal future stability for this town. The MOU is the conduit for that stability. And many hours, many lawyer hours, expensive hours went into making that as great as it is, passed and approved. And I would just encourage every resident to have faith in our town administrator. And please don't buy into the backyard private investigators and whatever their social mediaing on their Snappergrams. I just don't understand any of that. So if you have a question, reach out to our town administrator. She's fantastic and she'll be able to get you an answer. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know what Snappergram is, but I'm going to look up, download that app tonight, Snappergram.
You should like the ring of it. Penguin, penguin.
Some kid in Silicon Valley is developing Snappergrams right now.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, now I've submitted five times.
Trademark it.
Or deny ever saying it. All right. So bottom line is, questions to you, if you're on this board, hopefully by the end of the day on Monday at public at some point on Tuesday, but no later than Tuesday at 5:00.
And if they come to you and you just send, I mean, I'll aggregate them all into one big one, figuring that there might be overlaps.
But everyone here has the responsibility, if you get questions that aren't directly to Kate, send them to Kate. And if you think they're not directly to Kate, but they might be, send them to Kate anyway. Just keep sending them. Okay, thank you. The next two items, I believe, we accidentally kept on the agenda. You wanted them on a later agenda, is that correct?
I do, but I could ask for some clarification, if it's okay.
Sure. Just to read them out, the folks, accounting budget software, which was tabled from our October 2nd meeting, and update review townwide fees, which was also tabled from the same meeting. You have questions?
I do, so let me just look at this. The accounting and budget software, we can, I think, just take off for now.
That is done now.
Take it off, right?
And take that off to agenda.
If it rears its ugly head again, it will, but not for now. Update review of the townwide fees, what I, the, Mike Silver brought forward, excellent, you know, updates, which we approved.
I thought that's what you were talking about too, but you were talking about a surcharge on the fair. I had to go back.
Yes, well, I was looking at, we had looked, talked, had so many different discussions. And I've put out to different towns, there's 351 different...
News papers.
Yes, it's difficult. And I used our fee schedule, which has fees for things like jukeboxes. And believe it or not, jukeboxes and taxis. So I'm not going, so I was...
You can have that stipend.
Jukebox?
Yeah.
No.
Snappergram, put jukeboxes out there. Correct. No, we're going to keep it on, but not, but I won't, I'll port back after the first year. But what I want for the board...
So we're taking it off, and then if you want to bring it on agenda...
Yeah, but for the board, just to clarify, because they're looking back on all the old minutes and so on, there was, seemed to be some confusion. I would like to focus on just what Kate was thinking it was, on things like entertainment, open-air events, tickets, and look at our earth removal permit fee structure.
I think that sounds fantastic.
So just to focus to that.
She's going to bring this...
Entertainment.
She's going to bring it back in January.
Or events, events in general, entertainment, events, pageant.
And earth removal.
Sorry about that, I thought I had, I didn't obviously have that.
Okay, she's going to bring it back in January.
Got it, oh, in January.
Yeah, so I don't sweat it until she brings it back. All right.
It's Monday deadline, more for people with Thanksgiving.
Yes, but I want to clear the decks of some other issues first. Because I fear this will take time. Want to acknowledge the resignation of Sean Windsor from the Community Preservation Act Committee. We thank Sean for his service. We thank him for his service and hope all is well, and he has a happy Thanksgiving. Next, we're going to get back to, I'm just clearing the decks of other things. I just said we're going to... Yeah, no, I know, I saw. But I also said we're going to clear the decks of some other things.
Oh, okay.
So we'll get back to, because I said, I believe this was going to take more time, so I...
Would you like me to read that?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'd like to offer a motion to approve a special one-day liquor license application for the Lancaster PTO for their art and vendor fair to be held December 2nd from 12 to 4 at the Lancaster Community Center, 39 Harvard Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's hear it for the PTO.
It's a great, great event, people should go.
Fantastic. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Congratulations to them. Communications sign-offs will be closed Thursday and Friday this week for Thanksgiving. Our next meetings will be the 4th and the 18th of December. I don't know what the Affordable Housing Trust letter is.
It was just in correspondence. It was the one on deeply affordable.
There's a letter in our communications file from the Affordable Housing Trust. All right.
Could I, before we leave?
We're going back to...
Before we leave, no, before we leave the MOU, we just had a couple...
We already left the MOU.
Well, we had a couple.
That was a while ago.
Some of these annoying texts, there was, there was two...
They can submit questions then to you and you can get them to Kate.
There was two... If there was two deadlines mentioned, so it would be...
Yes, one for this board, is it my right, which is what I said, and then the public too, is it? So, okay. Number five in section seven.
Yeah, got a motion, if we can pass that down. So I move for the select...
For to enter executive session, MGL Chapter Thirty-eight, Twenty-One, A five, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct, or to consider the filing of criminal complaints, and may can reconvene back into open session, all votes to be taken.
Is there a second?
Just for a question to process.
You have to either second, you can second for discussion, but you have to second.
You have a procedural question?
Yes.
All, I still, unless, until the vote changes it, I still get to chair, so you have to either second, or the motion fails for lack of a second, so. You can second for discussion, and then we can vote. You can ask, and then during discussion, you can ask all the kinds of procedural questions. But there's a motion, which the only option we have now is...
I just don't know if it's a legal motion based on the fact that it wasn't...
I understood. I understand that, I, you know, and which I'm glad to discuss, and I'd like to, so...
Second.
I'm now an accomplice to the...
No, you're not, no, it's, this is just for the purpose of discussion. Your question.
Okay. According to the open meeting law, I thought that we had to post and notify and so on, and have this kind of a thing, an executive session posted ahead of time.
We do.
Unless it was an emergency.
No, not true.
Okay, well, it's your motion.
Yeah, so I can, so I can answer that. So actually, it was unforeseen, and I'm happy to discuss that in executive session. The next part is, it's an update to an existing agenda, so this agenda was posted properly. It was posted forty-eight hours ahead of time.
Yep.
Agenda item five was in fact part of the agenda, and I came into what I would call new information. I made a request on Sunday to have this agenda updated. Through conversations today, I was told that it's completely up to the chair, whether he decided to update the agenda. The agenda wasn't updated. I'm deciding to make the motion. I'm confident that it is an appropriate motion. I was not given any other direction from council that it was inappropriate, and I spoke to them today.
Given that I'm the chair who made the decision not to update the agenda, when I was contacted yesterday with this motion, I too believed and still agree that this is not an emergency matter, and therefore doesn't meet the standard the way I understand it. I can add it to the agenda, of course. I have spoke with council several times. As I mentioned earlier today, council will make themselves available on December fourth to answer any questions we have at that meeting, and for that reason, I will be voting against this motion.
Sure. A couple of things, council also made themselves available today.
Sure.
And the decision was made not to invite council. I'm concerned that a potential...
The decision...
I'm concerned that a potential criminal matter does not rise to the station of this board, considering for us to talk about it in the moment. That's obviously the purview of this board, but I can guarantee the board that if we do not enter into executive session today, I will myself personally be filing a criminal complaint of what I believe to be a serious and egregious act, so...
Which is your right.
Yes. And that's where I am.
I just want to go to that. Massachusetts law is very clear, and if something isn't an immediate threat, we have to follow the open meeting law to the T, and we should, so that, for that reason, if there's not an emergency, I think December fourth would be...
And I will say, to support what Jason's saying, yes, there is the provision where the chair can override that. I just don't believe the issue is of such emergent nature to warrant doing this outside of having time to have council come and be with us and discuss it, so.
But council could have come today.
They could have, but I asked them, I did not put it on the agenda, so, yeah. I mean, firmly, I wear this decision, as I wear whatever else decisions I make from this chair, so. So, all those in favor of this motion, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose, say no. No.
All right. Next on the agenda, I'll go ahead and read this. So first, I'd like to thank the current members of the Lancaster Historical Commission. They have supported me, the select board, and town staff throughout this process. I'm incredibly grateful for their professionalism and grace. I'd like to present some findings from the inventory of the Lancaster Historical Commission.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, can you, please pause.
I have to leave.
Just leave it. And I will say that I strenuously object to you reading this aloud. I think it's inappropriate and puts the town in a very difficult legal situation. So I'm just to say that, give you a chance not to say this, and have us have this discussion with council on December fourth.
So can you explain what's inappropriate about this?
But if you choose, if you choose to go forward with this, you can, you're duly elected, just as I am.
So I spoke to council today, and they had no problem with this line of conversation. I don't understand.
I'm telling you what I would find, I don't think it's appropriate, and I think it would be best to be discussed at our December fourth meeting, is what I am telling.
You know what's in here?
I'm reading the words you put directly in front of me, and I'm looking at the things that are attached.